I'd like to call this meeting of the Lakota Board of Education to order. We're going to start with a motion. Do I have a motion to appoint Mr. Adam Zink, the Assistant Treasurer, as our Treasurer Pro Tem?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Adam, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. Lovell.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes. Now we'll do the roll call. Adam, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Casper.
Here.
Mr. Lovell.
Here.
Ms. O'Connor.
Here.
Mr. Parnell. Ms. Schaefer.
Here. Now please join me in the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Adam, any discussion? Adam, will you please call the roll?
Who was second?
Linda.
Who's the first? Who's the motion? That had me screwed up. Mr. Lovell.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
It gets easier, Adam.
Oh, there we're up now. Okay.
All right.
Sorry about that.
All good. Now we're going to move to Board President's comments. I just, like, we had discussed a little bit about the Cyber Academy and that the Lieutenant Governor, John Huestead, came down, but we wanted to present the plaque that we received also from the Chamber of Commerce for our opening of our Cyber Academy, as well as the proclamation we received from Representative Lang, so we wanted to present those here this evening.
Awesome.
And with that, I will move to Superintendent's comments.
Just really quick on behalf of the district, kind of tied into a little bit of the cyber. Lakota Local Schools was awarded an honoree as the Corporate Tech and Innovation Awards from ComSpark, so we received that last week. The other businesses and groups that were honored, along with Lakota Local Schools, was Fifth Third Bank, First Financial Bank, GEDigital, Phillips Edison and Company, Sipsy Klein, and Sunrise Technology LLC and Kroger. So I think we're in pretty good company, so appreciate the work that they've put in, ComSpark has with us on our Cyber Academy. That's it.
Thank you. All right, and now we'll move to Assistant Treasurers' comments. Mr. Zink, do you have any?
Ms. Logan just wanted to let everybody know that she regretted not being able to make it this evening. She's ill.
Thank you.
Other than that, no further business.
Thank you.
And she never misses a board meeting either.
Right. We wish her a speedy recovery. All right, then with that, we'll move to the First Student Spotlight.
Good evening, everyone. The Technology Student Association, or TSA, is a student-led organization with more than 250,000 members. Our partner, Butler Tech, sponsors a state-level TSA competition where students compete in various STEM challenges. For the second year in a row, Caitlin Nappick, Christina Ogul, and Elizabeth Ogul advanced to the national competition in Washington, DC. In a competition called Off the Grid, their challenge was to conduct research on a sustainable architectural design for a home in a country other than the United States. All of their hard work and dedication paid off when they became national champions. Please welcome Caitlin, Christina, and Elizabeth.
Okay. So what TSA is, you kind of already said it, but you get to take, like, the learning outside of the classroom and, like, state-level competitions and go to national competition. So what our competition was, we had to build an off-the-grid house that's basically self-sustainable for a family of four, and it did not require any outside energy sources. We had to have our own waste, and we also had to make a poster, a brochure, a portfolio, and when we got to the semifinals, we had to do an interview.
Our inspiration for this was basically our competitiveness. We're all in sports, so we really strive to, like, do our best. Redemption from last year, me and her competed in seventh grade, and we fell short. And then, we wanted to make a challenge, and we chose to do something, like, pretty hard compared to the rest of them. And then we also wanted something that we could all work together for, so we chose, like, a teamwork one instead of an individual one. Our mentors and opportunities, so we got the opportunity to meet women from P&amp;G who are engineers. So Kate, our overall mentor, she helped us through scheduling and, like, really just pushed us through. And then Fang Hu was our Chinese cultural engineer, which basically told us a lot of things we needed to know about China, because we're not going to find that much on the internet. And then also shout out to Mr. Willis, who got us into this competition in the first place. And then opportunities we got, so in Washington, DC, we got to see the sights, and when we were in nationals, we saw people from across the country, and we actually spoke to them while we were pin trading, and then we rode on a water taxi.
So what is the importance of all of this? So a lot of kids don't really understand what engineering is, and this goes with the second one, but it's, anyone can achieve it through their background. Like, you don't, just because, for example, my parents are engineers, doesn't mean that I, that anyone else couldn't do it because their parents aren't engineers. You don't really need to have any background in it. You can just read the directions and have fun with it. And there's only a small percentage of women who are in STEM. I feel like women aren't really encouraged to do these things, because men are always told to do it. What have we learned from this? You can do work and still have fun. Just because it's schoolwork doesn't mean that it has to be boring and we have to hate it. Working together is more productive than arguing about everything. And the fastest way isn't always the best way, but at the same time, the slowest way isn't always the best way, because you don't always have time to do it the slow way. You need to adapt and overcome to any challenges. If she told me not to cut and I already cut, well, it's too late for that. And time management, we need to get this project done in a certain amount of time, and it still needs to look good. And then we can accomplish this, because we set our minds to it, and we are prepared and motivated to do it. And these are some pictures from nationals. Yeah. Thanks.
Questions for these ladies, if you want to stay at the mic for a minute?
How many teams competed at nationals?
We aren't sure of the exact number, but we saw a lot of them there, so I'd give fifty, maybe.
Just for our event, there were also a lot of other competitions that you could have done.
Where did the event take place? In DC? Where were you at? Do you?
National Harbor.
Okay, yeah.
I really liked that you mentioned your mentors, and how they helped you in different ways, and that it took more than one mentor for you to get there. So do you think you might consider mentoring younger students as you go along?
I don't think any of us really thought about that, but I guess it's a good idea if we, I mean, we're leaving our project at the school, so anybody who wanted to do this competition could see an example of it, but they could also, we could give them our contact information, so they can figure out how to do some of the stuff that we did.
Just planting a seed.
Did this change any of your future career thoughts, or have any impact on that?
Yeah, it certainly made us, like, think more about becoming engineers, and it, like, impacted the way we think about, like, basically STEAM as a whole.
I personally, I know I said that many women aren't really encouraged to do STEAM, but I kind of felt forced into the role of STEAM because my parents were engineers, and I was just like, well, I don't want to do engineering, that's boring. But I started doing these projects, and I realized that engineering doesn't really need to be boring. You don't need to be amazing in math or science or anything. You can, it's just, it's fun.
Really proud of you guys. Congratulations, yes.
Thank you. If you could please join us up front, oh, we have, it looks like a presentation first.
On behalf of Lakota Ridge Junior School, we just want to thank these wonderful young ladies for their contributions in winning the national titles here. We want to thank Lee Quarter with Butler Tech, and also Frank Willis, who's our Butler Tech teacher. We very much value our partnership with Butler Tech as well as TSA. It's an amazing partnership that we have, and we're so very proud of you, and we thank your families, and we thank the board and our school leadership for allowing us to celebrate this moment together this evening.
One last thing, we have also a trophy that could be housed in the building for future reference. Who would like to present this to Ben?
Great.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now if you would all like to join us up front, we'd appreciate that.
Congratulations, Sam. These sleeves keep getting caught on the chair.
Butler Tech just shared with us that there were 7,000 students there.
Wow.
Yeah, it's amazing.
Congratulations, ladies. We're now going to move to our Staff Spotlight.
We're going to take a 30-second break here and help this out. Sorry.
No, okay, you're going to break it. Don't break it.
I don't want to break it.
I was going to say, don't break it. Somebody get away from him. Somebody take it away from him.
They have to get home and get their homework.
Their hard work.
There's some good teamwork, right?
Part of the repair and reengineering process, right?
Okay, up next, we have our Staff Spotlight. If Ms. Cottle, Mr. Kreip, Mr. Dollar, and Mr. Schlensker could come on up to the podium, please. I'm hoping Mr. Ruff has their trophies. I have a couple of comments to say, then I'm going to turn the mic over. I just, these are math teachers from Hopewell Junior who created a Reality Path Fridays for every single seventh and eighth grade student at Hopewell. Obviously, a project-based learning PBL activity, and this one that we're going to talk about in particular was a personalized learning play that our teachers are using this year. They challenge our students to map out their futures, including personal finances, which is something that is a big emphasis at Lakota. Every Friday's activities are focused on helping students make the connection between school and real life. And the example that I saw, that I think is what brought them here today, is the team here invited 12 local businesses to participate in the Future Ready Fair, which was amazing. And I appreciate the work and time that went into that. It's something outside of the box that our kids really need and really, I think, really appreciate. I appreciate the time that you put in for that. I appreciate the time that you're here, giving up your time tonight for this presentation. But also, a shout-out to the 12 businesses that gave up, I think, a whole day, at least, to help our kids with real-world learning and talking about things involving salary, dress codes, getting that job. And just to see our kids go from business to business, talking about what that looks like, was, I thought, huge for us. So I don't know if that's to anyone's thunder, and I don't know who's going to talk. All right.
I think you stole everything I was going to say. Yeah, thank you. So our play, our PBL this year, we wanted to look at, what we really wanted to do is answer the question that students commonly have, which is, when am I ever going to use this stuff? And particularly, as a math teacher, I feel like we get that a lot. So really, not just teaching the students the curriculum that they're, that we're charged with teaching, but making it as relevant as possible to their lives, to their learning, and to their futures. And one of the ways that we've done that in the past is introduce them to careers that involve math, but the reality of that is, is not every student is interested in those things and will go on to do those things. They have other interests that may not involve mathematics as much as others. So really focusing and making this a two-year PBL for our seventh graders when they come to us, and then continue it on through eighth grade when they leave Hopewell, was to look at, in that first year at Hopewell, what are all the ways that you will encounter math outside of academics from seventh grade through high school? And that can be anything from applying for your first part-time job, interviewing for your first part-time job, making money, saving money, spending money, developing a budget, and looking at all of those things. And then when they get into eighth grade, focusing on post-secondary plans, and them having choices, and looking at the college, trade school, military, and what that looks like from a financial standpoint, and things they can do from there on a more adult sense, and how that changes from being a minor to becoming an adult. And at the end of eighth grade, we'll wrap up with moving forward into a career, and, you know, talking about all different topics, like credit, and loans, and mortgages, and savings, and retirement. Just exposing them to as much as possible to the, you know, because when a student asks us, when am I going to use this stuff, the real answer is, it really just depends. When you're looking at solving equations, and graphing functions, and things like that, what types of jobs really do that, and they are out there, but when will I encounter math on a daily basis as a high school student, as a college student, as an adult? And that's what we're really trying to focus on. And the first big part of that was the Future Ready Fair that Mr. Miller mentioned. With the help of our administrators, and Heidi Adams, and Katie Bauer, and I don't, our PTSO, we were able to get 12 businesses into Hopewell Junior from 7:15 to 2:10. They gave up an entire day, and they didn't just give up one person. Many of the businesses had sent multiple people throughout the day, and they gave all of our students at Hopewell an opportunity to interview them and ask them questions. Our students made their own rotation schedule, who they were going to visit, and what they were going to ask. And our students were engaged from the minute the bell rang, you know, in the beginning to the end. And any problems that we tried to foresee, didn't happen. The people that came in did an awesome job, the kids did a great job, and it was, it was really fluid the way that it worked out. Just some, some things that we have planning for the, for the future of this, for Fridays throughout the school year, we really want to, we're looking into how we can make a connection with our students and high school students, because the juniors and seniors in the high schools are, are in the middle of planning and trying to figure out the things that we're trying to prep our students for. So getting them connected, and, you know, what kind of things can our older students in Lakota tell our younger students to start thinking about? And maybe some of the things that we're doing can kind of help them as well. You know, our students are developing portfolios that they can present to them, and maybe we can open the eyes of the older students, too, with some of the things that we've thought about that maybe they haven't. So it's a, it's an ongoing thing. It's a, it's our first year doing it, and we're still figuring it out, but I think it's, it's gone really well. Our kids are getting a lot out of it. We're getting a lot out of it, and, and we look forward to building it.
Questions or comments, Board?
I mean, I don't have a question, but I think that, you know, when we start talking around the district about, what are we going to do to really connect our curriculum to what's happening outside the walls of the school? I mean, this hits it on every point, and so the fact that you all took that step out, and maybe out of your comfort zone, just a little bit, from what you're familiar with or used to, I think it says a lot about who you are and the dedication that you have to our students. So thank you for doing that, and I hope you feel the benefit on the back end.
Yeah, we do, and thank you for that, because it, it has been, you know, a real step out of our comfort zone, and, and looking at, you know, because we tie, we're tying everything that we're doing to curriculum, and sometimes those ties can be really strong, and sometimes they can be kind of loose. But it's, it's what we feel is best for kids. And, you know, just as a small plug, I know somebody told me you guys want to stay here as long as possible. The, making sure we're hitting all of our curriculum is another thing that I am super proud of, because like I said, the Fridays can be, can have really strong ties, depending on what we're talking about. Sometimes they can be more loose. But really, we're utilizing mastery paths to make sure that our Monday through Thursday, that we are hitting our curriculum and hitting it in ways that personalizes it for kids, so that when we get to our Friday, that they're not missing anything that we're doing. So, you know, it's, it's, it's been as good for us as I think it has been for the kids, as far as learning, you know, how to, how to do other things, and as far as the PBL and the mastery path and personalizing it. So it's been a, it's been an all-around win-win.
Good. Well done.
We very much appreciate, again, the time you've taken to do it. Have you had any interest, or from the other three junior schools, that they may want to try to implement something like this, or is it still in the infancy?
Well, we have, we have our PD this Monday, and then we have another, another November 4th, and Kyle and I will be attending some common things with the other schools, where we'll be able to share things that we've been doing. So I hope so. I look forward to it.
Awesome. Thank you.
I'm very supportive of your efforts. This is Adulting 101, all the things that you're talking about, that parents and the community are telling us our kids need to know these things. I think this is terrific. Thank you for the effort and time that went into it.
Thank you.
Thank you. I take it back, like Linda said, this is what we continue to hear, is exactly what you're doing, is that demand. So we're thrilled to hear how that's working and that it's working well for you. I love the tieback of the older kids that you're bringing in as well. I think that'll be really helpful for all of them, and I think young alumni would be somebody else to tap as a resource potentially as well. So thank you for all you've done. All right, if you could join us up front, we'd appreciate it.
All right, with that, we come to our first opportunity for public comment. If anybody has anything they'd like to speak to us about pertaining to what is on our agenda this evening, they may do so at this time. Seeing no one, we'll move to Board Reports. Policy?
Mr. Vogelmann's going to come up. We had a policy meeting, gosh, was it last week? On the 4th? The first Friday of every month, I know that. We've got some first reads.
Yes. On the board agenda are three items for first read. Well, one's really kind of a second first read, but I'll kind of go in reverse order just because it's easier that way. Policy 8400, school safety is just updating language instead of emergency management plan, it needs to be changed to emergency operations plan. So it's just lining up language. The next one, the 6217 budget stabilization, I believe was before the board before, and then it was sent back to Policy and Jenny to review. Jenny has not recommended any changes, so now it comes back for first read once again. The other one is Policy 3113, conflict of interest. This is one that I brought for, just knowing that the state of Ohio is currently taking revisions for Code of Professional Conduct for Ohio educators, and just concerned about some of the language in our 3113 that allows teacher to possibly tutor a student that is on their class list for compensation. Feel that is a little bit of a direct conflict with the Code of Professional Conduct. So there is some allowance and statute for it, just really not best practice. And so just figure why they're taking revisions, maybe it's time for the board to take a look at that again. Doesn't mean you have to take that, but just would like to throw that out to the board for consideration, to take a look at that, and see if that's something, still we want to continue that practice, or if it's something we would like to eliminate moving forward. We do have another Neola update. The fall update is out. I know you're excited about that. Norm will be here, our representative from Neola, on Friday, November 1st, and he will cover those 15 policies with us at that time. So any questions on the first read policies that are before you tonight?
Has there been any discussion, excuse me, has there been any discussion of the conflict of interest with our LMC committee?
We have not had that lately. In the past, I know, talking with them, that they're not comfortable encouraging their members to receive compensation, and so they've kind of steered them away from that policy, just because there's some gray area when you say, okay, I have not shown favoritism to this student, and if I tutor a student, if I do a good job and they get an A, do they get an A because I tutored them, or do they get an A because I deserve it? Just puts them in a bad position, they feel. And so I don't believe that our LEAs encourage any of our staff to tutor students on their own class list. So I feel like the policy then kind of puts them in a, in a position where maybe we can just help them with that decision, or if the board wants to keep it on there, then maybe we need to do more research on our end on how that takes place, so that they're not caught in an ethical situation in which they have to defend their actions.
Right. So we're not aware of any specific situations that this is?
No, just, just due to the fact that it's up at the state, because the state added a ninth area of social media responsibilities for professional code of conduct. Just figured, since they're revising that and they're asking for input, I just figured now's a good time for us to look at, we haven't looked at in about five, six years, so.
And we, we weren't able to have a lot of conversation. Todd was not at the policy committee around this, and so I do believe it's something that we as a board need to have a discussion about. I feel strongly that, you know, we should not be putting our teachers in a position to be violating ethics based on our board policy. And so even though we could probably put this in to our policy, or keep it into our policy, the reality is, is that then, we're going to have to create a lot of systems and structures on the back end to ensure that we're doing things correctly, so that there's not ultimate liability on our end. And so I think that prior to moving forward, it would be healthy for, when Todd's here, to have more conversation around this, so that we're all on the same page. That'd be my recommendation.
Thank you. Any other questions or concerns for Rob?
Again, it's just a first read.
Right. All right. Thank you, Rob.
Thanks, Rob.
All right, with that, we'll move to Community Engagement. Kelly?
We have some community conversations on the books, which I know the board gets an email, but just for the people in the audience that are dying to attend. October 23rd, we're having one at 6:30 with Union Elementary Staff, Students, Parents, students meaning sixth graders. November 7th at 5:30 at the Boys and Girls Club. And then November 25th is our rescheduled finance, on District Finances, that we had scheduled and had to reschedule. And then December 2nd, we are having one on, at 6:30. The room has not been booked yet, on District Culture. So the topic is like E plus R equals O, and self-respect, and things like that, and what kind of culture we want to have in our school district. And then December 3rd, at 11:30, we're doing one with West freshmen. We're going to do East and West freshmen. We have not talked to the freshmen separately that I know of ever, so. These are all on the calendar. If you have any questions? Nope, that's all I have on. Nope, that's all I have on.
All right. We'll move to Butler Tech.
The Butler Tech Board has a busy week this week. We just had our ribbon cutting at the Middletown Airport for our aviation program. It's an exploration of aviation. They'll get drone certification out of it, have the opportunity to do some of the mechanical work on airplanes and see some of the extra roles and jobs that they might be interested in. So, we've got 30 kids in the program, and one of our Lakota East students, a junior, Seth Langford, was actually selected to do the media briefing. So, he was on the runway, and I told him he had a second job if he decided not to go into aviation as a newscaster. He was doing a great job. So, very proud that it was one of our Lakota students doing that, and full support from local elected officials from Middletown on down at the ribbon cutting. So, very exciting stuff. Board meeting tomorrow night. We have a business meeting with Rheinstahl, who is a key community partner for us, on Thursday morning, and then, as you all have been invited to, there is an all-boards meeting, student showcases out at the Butler Tech campus. And it's a new process for us to be doing student showcases, which is where the kids are presenting their own projects and that kind of thing, and hearing directly from them what they're planning to do and where they're going to do it. So, it's going to be a nice night, and I hope everybody's able to attend.
I think we are. I think we're all going, so that'll be fun.
Just to clarify a question. You said 30 students in the program? 30 Lakota students?
No.
30 Butler Tech altogether? Got it.
30 Butler Tech kids from across Butler County.
Yep. Okay, that's good. I was going to be surprised if it was just 30 Lakota and then more, but I was just clarifying, so thank you.
I might not have said it clearly, so I apologize.
No, you did. I just was making sure.
We had the one on the runway talking, so it was all good.
Great, we got the... Any other questions or anything else on Butler Tech? Thank you, Linda. We'll move to Legislative Committee.
Matt, would you like to start?
I only have, I think, you know, with election coming up, there's a lot of, not a lot of legislative action going on right now. I will say, I've had two meetings, one with Bassel Legislative Committee and one with State Superintendent Advisory Committee about the report card. Pretty contentious, to say the least, about some of the changes coming up for next year. So, I'm thinking there'll be a little bit of compromise on what some of those cut scores and things will be. I hope there are. Otherwise, it's going to be rough next year for the whole state. So, there's some conversations taking place in Columbus and around the state about the report card and making some changes. So, I hope that happens. I just wanted to put that out there. I have a Bassel Legislative meeting in the morning, so I might learn more. That's about all I had.
So, I had an opportunity to attend the Southwest Regional Fall Conference and got a legislative update there as well. And Lakota students were recognized for three different things that they participated in at the Student Achievement Fair Capital Conference in 2018. I'm sorry, that was 2018.
Right?
Yeah. Lakota Local Liberty Junior received an award for their participation in media design and communication. Lakota Local Canoe Regatta, just add water. And the Silent Collaboration Through Technology, which is about our ASL Sign Language classes, communicating across the district through technology and giving them an extra opportunity to practice those skills. So, that was great, and I'll be happy to turn those over to you, Matt.
Okay. I'll make sure they get there. Thank you.
A couple of other pieces. There'll be a February 2020 Social and Emotional Learning Summit in Columbus that I think it would be good for us to have a presence at.
I've already forwarded that info to the players that will make that happen.
Terrific. As Matt mentioned, there is work going on on the report card. They actually have started a legislative committee that has the State Superintendent, three superintendents, and legislators from both sides that will be sitting down together, very short timeframe. It will be established in two months, and they'll be expected to put a report out within two months, which is not what we normally hear happening at the legislative level. And hopefully, they'll take some of the work from Representative Duffy's committee into account in that discussion. But they are saying that now is the time for school districts to put in comments if they want to, so we may want to develop a draft on that and put something forward. Student Wellness Funding will be coming out by October 31st, and I think that was about $6 per student. It was in the Bionium budget.
Maybe a little less, maybe.
A little less?
A little bit, but close.
When we're looking at federal legislation, we expect the House Education and Labor Committee to have a pretty heavy schedule when they return on October 14th. They'll be hitting the Higher Education Act to reauthorize that. In addition to that, we also have work going on on the reauthorized Perkins funding, and Butler Tech will be absolutely paying attention to that and weighing in on it as well. And I think that's all that I have for tonight.
Just to weigh on that piece with that subcommittee on the report card that you mentioned with the State Superintendent, three superintendents, and a couple of others, I just hope that there's some common sense in the room when they're listening to the State Superintendent, because on other things, he's been sort of pushed to the side on. I'm just, I'm saying that to you, I'm just, for everybody's sake, that I hope that cooler heads prevail in that regard. So...
I think it's always great when common sense prevails at the state level. Absolutely.
And I'm glad the draft, something up, so we have some talking points on that, but they already know where I'm at.
Let's put it in writing anyway.
Most of it will put it in writing.
I was also offered an opportunity, beginning in January of 2020, to serve on the OSBA Board of Trustees. So, there are 25 people that serve on that from across the state, and it is a policymaking body for education. So...
Is that at the state level or regional?
At the state level.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Wow, that's great. Congratulations.
It's always good to have more voices wherever we can insert them. So, that's it for legislative.
I have one, yeah, I just had one thing that I thought was interesting, because we get a lot of, we hear a lot of questions about people passing stop buses. And so, there is a Senate bill that's in committee right now that would make the fines higher if you pass a school bus, and also allowing for the cameras to be used for that purpose. Because from my understanding now is that, you know, you can't take a picture with your cellphone as the bus driver and submit it to Westchester Police, and they arrest the person. But the cameras will allow that on the bus. And there's some provision in there for funding for cameras to be put on buses. So, it's still in committee, but it's interesting, because we get a lot, we hear a lot about that. We get a lot of, hear a lot about that.
Your missus and all the rest.
Yes.
All right. Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you. Facilities Committee, Brad and Brad?
Brad and Brad, we did not meet. We have our next meeting on the 21st, where we'll be bringing in the educational gurus to have conversations with them about the future of education, which will hopefully help us drive clarity in whether or not we want to use their services in the future or not. So, they're going to be helping us understand their value to the process.
Thank you. Do you have anything to add?
Nope.
Safety Committee?
The only thing I wanted to mention is, as you may have heard, some of our SROs were a little bit short in some of our buildings, just based on retirements, and some of them have taken leave for different reasons. So, and we work really close with the Butler County Sheriff's Department and Westchester Police in making sure we get quality SROs. So, there is some training and background that goes into that, and it's not just sticking a patrolman or officer, deputy sheriff in a school and thinking we're done. So, there's a rotation going on, and they are aware that we are a little short than what we'd like to have. So, hopefully, that those permanent replacements come in soon. I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Are they giving you any timeline, Matt? Any?
Not lately, no. But that's something I can circle back at and find out more information.
Can they provide temporary support?
They have been, and they've been doing some rotations as well, but they're a little understaffed right now, too. So, they know it's a priority for us, obviously, and I think it is for them, too. That's all I had on safety.
Thank you. Any other questions on that? All right, we'll move to New Business. Does anyone have anything under New Business? Old Business? We have a Transportation Update. We have some outstanding questions.
Chris has a couple pieces of information based on our last meeting for everybody.
Good evening. One of the things I was asked to bring back was the total number of students that are being transported that are non-Lakota students, and I provided some information. On the front, you'll see the current private and parochial student counts for K-8. And on the back, you'll see for high school, the current counts, and that is projected for next year. So, current ninth graders, 10th graders, and 11th graders at different parochial and private schools were moved up. So, this does not have potential freshmen for next year when they did their studies. So, if you look at the numbers, based on that, right now, there's 586 kids at the high school level that potentially could receive transportation. And if you added another freshman class, if you take the average, it's about 195 kids. That additional could be added, so that'd take you up to 780 non-Lakota high school kids that potentially could receive transportation. The K-8 stays pretty steady, right around 1,250 kids that are non-Lakota that are eligible for transportation right now. Another thing that we looked at as well is looking at using a one bus to drop off the freshmen and go to the main campus. We did look at that. There would be some logistical things we need to go through as far as the times on the bus, because the bell times are different in the morning by about 55 minutes, but they're only 20 minutes difference in the afternoon. So, we have to figure out the logistics of that. Some kids would be on the bus for probably hour and a half. So, we'd have to look at things like that when we do considerations where we're going to pick kids up at 6 o'clock, and they don't have a bell time at the main campus till 8:05 that they need to be there. So, working through those things, it can be done. It may not be optimal, but we are looking through those various options as we were asked to do.
I think one of the other questions was about if we were going to do a, be able to change the bell times at the high school. You were going to talk about the educational impact of that, if that would be possible to do two routes with the same buses?
Don't have the feedback yet on that. It's one of the things we're working on.
Yeah, the educational impact, but from a routing standpoint, it's hard with the only 20 minutes at the end, and you have the seven period day at the freshman building and the six period day at the high school. One thing that we did look at is just going back to the way we used to do things a little bit back in 2011, where we had three different tiers, but there was a mix. It wasn't clean as far as all the elementaries in one tier. So, we did look at that. It would take us back about to where we were in 2011 with the number of routes, right around 215 to 221 routes. If we had the junior highs and the freshman buildings in the morning on Tier 1, then we did the high school and four elementaries in Tier 2, and we did four elementaries and six early childhoods in Tier 3. And that could work out with that for the calendar and getting kids in that way. But it would be a change. We'd have to change the bell times for us to current buildings.
But if you did that, would that be clean feeders?
Yes, yes. When you say clean feeders...
I just know that when I, when I was a principal of Creekside, and we were on the multi-tier system, we had some students that their families went to Freedom and some that went to Heritage, but they were on different time schedules. And so, it made it really difficult, because Creekside and Heritage were on the same time.
I can give you what our initial study looked at, but don't put this down in stone yet. But we looked at the two high schools and four elementary schools. We looked at just based on logistics and getting buses to the next locations. Looked at Adena, Endeavor, Union, and Van Gordon being in the middle tier.
Okay.
So, those would be the four. Then the rest of them would be in the late tier. So, you have your six early childhood schools, Cherokee, Freedom, Independence, and Woodland would be the late tier schools.
So, we would go back to changing the elementary start times? They would be different?
Potentially. That's one option that we could consider.
That's one of the options, yeah.
Yes.
And is that option, I'm sorry if I'm not following, but is that option to make nine to 12 busing work?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Chris, can you explain to us again what our timeframe is to making this decision?
If we want to get the assets in as far as buses and the drivers hired, we probably need to do it no later than the end of November, beginning of December, so they can start that process to get the assets ordered. Usually, when you order new buses, they need to be ordered in December, and they'll have the lead time to get here before the school starts in the summer and get the inspection from the state and everything that we need to do. So...
How many buses that was? What did we say? How many buses that was going to be?
Just for freshmen only, we're looking at 50 buses as a minimum. If we do more than that, we're probably looking towards 80 buses that we need to order.
So, is changing the bell time at the high school, if we do just, if we do freshmen, or is that if we just do nine to 12? If we do just freshmen, do we still have to change the bell times?
We do not.
We do not, okay.
Did you look at, it sounds like this model that you're looking at with the four elementary schools and Tier 2 and the rest in Tier 3. Have you looked at what the cost impact of that would be? Because I would think it would be different than what you presented to us last time.
It is a little bit different. We estimated between 215 to 221 routes, so that would put us closer where we were with the estimate before. It's probably about a six or seven route difference. So, and every route costs about $73,000 roughly.
That was approximately four and a half million?
For everything, yes, four and a half million from last time.
But for the ninth grade, we're still at the 2.6, correct?
2.6 for ninth grade?
Correct.
And if we do just ninth grade, are we changing, do we have to change the elementary and do the tier thing? No?
No.
Okay.
Matt, do you have something to say?
Just the other, the other thing that, as we're stepping through all this, because it's not easy and it's not clean, and it's, you know, what's going to drive the decision? Is it going to be the transportation? Is it the scheduling? Is it the timing? Things like that. The other thing that we have to think about when we're doing the facilities project, if we decide to do something with the ninth grade, I'm not saying we are at all, but if we do something with ninth grade going into the 10th, 11th, 12th building, we've got to think about ramifications of that down the road, too, and what does that look like?
And that's down.
I think I said that last time, too, but it's kind of like hanging out there for me.
That's down the road.
So...
So, we have to move on this relatively quickly, right, if we're going to do it?
If you want it for next school year, yes.
I think it's part of a broader conversation, though, what you're talking about, Matt. It's part of the broader conversation.
Sure.
And also, what you're talking about is fairly far down the road.
It, I mean, it is, right. But it's something that we're going to have to think about down the road. Yeah. There's different ways to do it.
So, we could, yeah.
I don't want to piecemeal something like this either and then have to pull back on the busing or change it again.
Right. I don't want to give something to somebody and then pull it back.
Right.
Right. I think this will probably be our big topic at the work session, just suggesting that for, in two weeks, two weeks.
Yeah, because we're going to have to move quickly if we want to do it for next year, if we're going to do it.
Yeah.
What, what is it that we collectively up here or individually need from Chris to be informed at that work session to move the conversation forward?
I personally would like to see the breakout with the moving of some of the elementary schools and kind of some more detail around how that would work. And I know the last time, we've talked about the 2.6 million for freshmen, but if we were able to change bell schedules, again, some more detail around how and if that is feasible to do, that would add it for everyone when there wasn't an incremental increase that was the same as what it was for the freshman building.
So, I'm sorry, there's a way to do it so that adding everybody is the same cost as the...
It wasn't as significant an increase. It was just, I think it was, I forget what the change was, but it was...
I thought it was 3.2, so it's another half a million or something like that.
It was a half a million, which is still a half a million. Three grades instead of 2.6 to add one grade.
Right, right.
So...
And...
Yeah, for freshman only is 2.6, almost 2.7 million. If we modified the bell times into nine through 12, it's 3.3, 3.4 million. So, it's about a half a million dollar difference.
And none of us want to negatively impact the educational experience for our kids based on transportation.
Yeah, that's what I want. I want to know. That's the thing that I want.
I don't think we have any understanding of that.
That's the information I would like at the work session, is if we change the bell times, how is that going to impact?
Kids.
Kids.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, I'm not impacting the education based on transportation.
Right.
There were also staff concerns, I believe, about going back and forth between buildings, so that would be something else to understand.
Sure. Yep.
Can you explain that more, Ms. Tha?
That was, that was from the presentation.
The staff going between the buildings?
Right, that there were staff implications to it, too. So, when you're looking at educational impact, I feel like this is a major decision and a major expenditure, so I understand. And I thought you said, Chris, eight months before the start of the school year was when we would need to make a decision, that you'd need about eight months of lead time. So, I would like to be sure we're fully informed on this before we make a decision.
Anything else, Brad?
No, I mean, I completely agree. This is a conversation that you all, as a board, have been a part of for many years, way before I became on the board. I think that we owe it to our community, because our community consistently tells us that we need to solve the ninth grade busing issue. I'm not saying we have to solve the 10 to 12 grade issue with busing. What I don't want to do is get in a spiral of collecting data and having conversations for the next eight to 12 months, because we just don't want to... want to make a decision. And so my push will be to get to the point where we have the data, we've had the conversations, and we're get it to some type of vote. That's me. That's my own opinion. But at some point, we're just going to have to take a stance and say, yes, we're for ninth grade busing or no, we're not for it. And we move forward. Or nine to 12, whatever that may be. I'm just, I'm at that point. Because I hear it all the time. All the time.
So part of the data that I had asked for was a survey of our current parents to ask how many of you would actually use it. We've made a lot of assumptions about how that response would be, but we really don't have it. Can we gather that?
Yeah, we can do that.
But we also talked that a survey by doing that, most people would indicate that they do need busing or they will take busing.
Right.
And your assumption may be correct, but I'd still like to see the data.
Let's get the survey. Let's get it out. Let's get it going.
Is that something we can do? Get it out before the work session and give people a couple of weeks? Can we build it that quickly?
Yeah, I think we can do that. Yeah.
It'd be nice to have that information if we could. Yeah.
Thank you, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you. Yep.
Thank you. All right. With that, we'll move to Treasurers' Recommendations, A and B, Approval of Board Minutes and Approval of the September 2019 Financial Reports. Do I have a motion?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Go for it.
Linda will be second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Adam, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
We have Superintendent's Recommendations, A through E, Approval of Personnel, Approval of a Memorandum of Understanding with the Westchester Police Department, a Comprehensive Security Monitoring Agreement, Field Trips and Donations. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion or any discussion?
Is this an increase, Matt?
No.
Is it just a?
It's just a renewal?
Renewal.
Correct. It's really just to clean up stuff, really. Cleanup language about the agreement.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Adam, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes. That brings us to our second opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to address the board, may, they may do so at this time. Seeing no one, we'll move to closing comments. We'll start with Brad.
Um, I, let's see here. We had the Steak and Burger Dinner to support the Boys and Girls Club, and that was a great event, very well attended event. They raised, gosh, do you remember how much they raised there? It was a significant amount of money, but it was really cool to be able to see the students that were performing that night and to see the impact that the club is having on the students across the district. And so it was fun to be able to be there, to see what was happening and to be a part of what they're doing in our community. We also had the Lakota Optimists Run. We had over 450 runners that participated in that across the district. A lot of the run clubs that were hap, or that are going on in our buildings. So it was fun to see them out as well. That's it.
I can't really think of anything. Just we're at the ending of fall sports, so we've got some great accomplishments. Both East girls and boys golf teams are going to state. Girls West Soccer, undefeated in the GMC Champs, and I'm sure they're going to go to state. I'm predicting it now. You heard it here first. I think they're going to win. But East-West game this weekend?
At West?
At West. Yep. Any, I can't think of any other. That's it. Okay.
So part of the East-West is also stuffing the bus and we are competing against Mason and Middletown?
Hamilton and Middletown.
Hamilton and Middletown. So we hope that you'll turn out, if nothing else, than to drop stuff off and that will be used for Reach Out Lakota and for our, our school pantries, which helps our families in need throughout the community. So we weigh and measure the pods to see who's brought in the most. And last year, we did a really good job against our competitors. So help everybody will help. Wanted to let the board know about EC3 event coming up early November. It is our annual tribute to veterans that we've done every year. And that will be Friday, November 8th at Miami University VOA Learning Center. We will have our kids singing from Lakota West Choir. They do a patriotic medley for our veterans that is just awesome and very, very touching. And that starts at 11 o'clock. And we do ask that you register for that and hope that you all are able to attend.
Thank you. Adam?
I don't have any comments.
You survived your first board meeting.
Kind of stole my thunder. Just looking forward to watching all of our kids in action on the field Friday night and at halftime with the band and all the Reach Out Lakota activities as well. So. And the, the district that we beat really bad last year and stuffed the bus decided not to do it this year. So we had to go find other.
Other victims?
Friends. That's it.
I'd like to thank Mr. Zing for filling in today. Nice job. We appreciate your, your assistance this evening. Again, just when everybody comes out to the football game, please be sure to bring something so that Reach Out Lakota can win regardless of whether east or west wins, because we all up here have to be neutral on that particular position. And again, with the Boys and Girls Club, Brad and I had that opportunity to attend that event. And I think when we started our partnership with the Boys and Girls Club, we all didn't know quite how that would go. So it was wonderful to see so much community support. And I think it's a great example of a private nonprofit partnering with us to support our kids and how we were able to work together to make that happen. And the tremendous strides when they talked about the advancements that the kids made that day, it really was nice to see. And we appreciate their additional support in making that happen. So with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Adam, will you please call the roll?
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. Lovell?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.